Then call the meeting to order. This is the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And I will ask Ms. Martin to please call the row.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Ballance?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks? Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Batall? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. Everyone's had a chance to review the summary minutes of the March fourth meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Being none, I'd ask for caution.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Stane.
Commissioner Graham?
Which Stane.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Which Stane.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Runner, I request that you order that the record this evening include all statutory and regulatory provisions. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, the qualification for each staff witness. And finally, I request that you administer the oath to those staff witnesses.
So order false worded tell the truth before this commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. And we have Ms. Megan Mooney with us this evening for our budget presentation. So we'll move that from her now.
Okay. I've prepared the fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed budget for you, and I've included in your packet. Everybody should have a copy of that. Our budget this year is very straightforward with very few changes from last fiscal year. And our only capital item is for computers. The highlights of the budget include our contribution that we're requesting from the city and the county will remain the same as last year. Our construction fees have been right on target this year, and we're projecting the same for next year. As far as expenses go, our CERS contribution rates are staying the same this year at twenty-six point nine five percent. And we have a one point four percent COLA added in for payroll. And as you guys know, that's determined by the Kentucky Department of Local Government. And our operating reserve balance is staying the same this year, and it's enough to cover two months of our expenditures. And I just want to point out that we had a budget committee meeting earlier this week. And they've approved the budget as you see it in your packet. And that's all I've got for you guys, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail on anything for you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question about employment. Did we have any that were drawing unemployment because of lack of hours? Or did we pay everybody like they were there even though they were at home?
Everybody was here and paid, and nobody missed any work due to COVID. If we did allow working from home, but they were working and able to remote in and have a home office. So we did not have any of that situation.
Are there any other questions on the budget? If there are no questions, then I would ask for a motion that we approve the proposed budget.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ballance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carries. Thank you all, and thank you to Megan for all you do for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Next, we have the subdivision and site development plans in the packet. Commissioners, do you have any questions on those? I think we had seven items. No questions. Then we'll move on. Letters of credit and performance funds. I don't believe we had any at all. And that brings us to unfinished business. And the first thing that we have for public hearing is to resume the meeting that we recessed at the March fourth meeting. And that will be docket number twenty twenty-one eleven ZBG. Sam Potter, Jr., and Jeffrey and Betsy Harman have filed an application to resume tracts of land containing approximately thirteen point five acres located at six zero three and six eleven Highland Way, twenty-three ten Nashville Road, from RS one A, which is single-family residential, to RM three multifamily townhouse residential and general business, both with a general development plan.
Ms. Runner, as we resume this hearing, I think I'd like to accomplish two things. First of all, if the board secretary, Ms. Martin, will read to us the names of those commissioners who were present at the March fourth hearing. And then also tell us which of those commissioners are present tonight and determine the quorum.
Yes. Commissioner Ballance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks? Commissioner Batalli cannot present tonight. And then Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
That equals seven, so four is met, sir.
Thank you. And then secondly, I'd like to set some guidelines for the conclusion of this hearing. At the time of your recess on March the fourth, we had concluded with all of the evidence and were dealing only with a proposal from the applicant to provide some amended development plan conditions. Those amended DPCs have now been filed and circulated to all interested parties. So that being the case, and in consultation with the two attorneys and also Mr. Will Heller, the board chair has established the following protocol for conclusion of the hearing. We will begin with a report from the applicant through their attorney, Tad Pardue. And he will be provided ten additional minutes within which to present amendments to his DPCs. At the conclusion of that presentation by Mr. Pardue, Mr. Stainback and other opponents not represented by Mr. Stainback will be afforded the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Pardue about his presentation. Thereafter, Mr. Stainback will be provided ten additional minutes within which to present his response to those amended DPCs. And likewise, Mr. Pardue and other opponents not represented will be afforded the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Stainback. The third item will be to provide Mr. Will Heller with ten additional minutes within which to present his response to the amended DPCs and additional comments which he has asked to make during the time, in addition to the time afforded him during the March fourth hearing. After Mr. Heller's presentation and the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Heller, any other interested party not represented by anybody who has already spoken, that is, Pardue, Stainback, and Heller. Any other interested party will be provided three additional minutes to comment on the amended DPCs. And the attorneys may ask questions about those comments as well. At this point, the public hearing will be complete. Mr. Stainback, because he bears is responding to this application, will be afforded three minutes within which to make closing arguments. There will also be afforded any other interested party who is not represented by Mr. Stainback with an additional three minutes within which to express and summarize their opposition. Let me stress that that will not be an opportunity to offer any additional evidence because at that point, the cases will be closed, but rather an opportunity to comment upon the the evidence as a whole. At the conclusion of Mr. Stainback and the opposition's closing, then Mr. Pardue, as the applicant, will be afforded three minutes within which to do a closing argument on behalf of his applicant. Now, the board chair, as she has done so far, will do her very best to limit repetitive testimony. The planning commission has already heard several hours of testimony concerning affordable housing, traffic impact, automobile collision, safety, sufficiency of the traffic impact study, compatibility of the proposed development with the existing neighborhood, change of neighborhood character caused by the development, sufficiency of proposed landscape buffer, commercial encroachment, and the desire to have no commercial connection to Highland Drive, property values, building heights, the need for additional green space, the need for additional park facilities. All of these testimony and documents have been made a part of the hearing record already. And presentations made tonight will likewise be a part of the hearing record. It remains the goal of this hearing to provide the public with an opportunity to be heard and to avoid repetitive testimony on relevant topics.
So Hamp, is it fair to say if we do have people get up and go over and over the stuff you just read that Velma, in her right, has the right to stop them since we've already heard all that?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. More.
Thank you, Ms. Runner. Those are all
Thank you, sir. So with that stated, we will start with Mr. Pardue to discuss his amendments to the development plan conditions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chair Runner. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for explaining a little bit about the procedure for this evening. I guess if I could do anything, I'll kick us off with a little good news, and that is that I don't think I'm going to use up my allotted ten minutes. So with that, let me let me call everyone's attention to the amended development plan conditions for the general business portion of the proposed development. And the way I think I'll do this is I'll just hit on and sort of explain the amendments without going through each and every condition again, which you heard plenty of testimony about two weeks ago. So Jessica, if you wouldn't mind, could we have the revised concept plan on the screen so I can sort of go along with, through the amendments and sort of point those out as they might appear on the revised concept plan? And I'll go ahead if if I can have the commissioners' attention and point you to the general business development plan conditions, the amended version specifically, development plan condition number one, Roman numeral one. You'll recall there were some concerns raised two weeks ago about the density of any potential residential development in that proposed general business portion that fronts Nashville Road. You'll see that previously we had a maximum density there of any residential of thirteen dwelling units per acre. We have amended that condition stating that the maximum density for any residential development there would be six dwelling units per acre rather than thirteen. Looking at the concept plan, it's a little difficult to show because, as I mentioned two weeks ago, the intent here is to develop that area as commercial and office and not residential. But we don't have it depicted as residential because that's not the intent at this point. But again, I did want to point out that amendment in that general business development plan condition. I'll next call your attention to development plan condition number six, Roman numeral six. You'll recall, those of you that were present two weeks ago, there was some concern about building height of those structures. We have agreed to amend our previous condition there that stated that all structures shall not exceed three stories to all structures shall not exceed two stories. And again, looking at the concept plan, just the way it is it is drawn, it's a two-dimensional sort of bird's eye view of a concept for the proposed development. So it's really hard, I guess, to demonstrate how a building height would look, given the dimension of the concept plan. And then lastly, I'll call your attention to development plan condition seven in the general business portion. We have added to the list of prohibited uses packaged liquor stores. That was a concern addressed, I believe, by some of the opposition as well as a commissioner or two. And we were certainly willing to add that to the list of prohibited uses. Turning from the general business development plan conditions, I'll call your attention to the the development plan conditions for the RM three portion. That's the five point nine one acres to the east of the general business portion. And specifically, the change to development plan condition four. You'll see that as an additional means of buffering, we've included a condition that an eight-foot-tall solid wooden fence should be constructed on the property along all boundary lines shared with any property used for a single-family residence. And if you look at the revised concept plan, again, it being a two-dimensional drawing, it is a little bit difficult to depict the fence. However, you will see where that eight-foot-tall solid wooden fence is noted, there are arrows. And that would start at the, looking at the concept plan, sort of the top right, which would be the northeast. There you go, where the little hand is. And that fence would run south to a corner point there where it would then turn east, run to a corner, and then turn south where it would terminate at the property line with the Potter Children's Home property. So that would be the location of the eight-foot-tall solid wooden fence, again, which is something that my clients were certainly willing to include and add as an additional means of buffering between the proposed RM three and single-family properties. The next condition I'll call your attention to in the RM three portion is condition number six. This deals again with building heights. There were some concerns brought up about height of buildings. We had originally proposed a maximum height of all multifamily structures on that property of two stories. With some of the concerns and discussion brought about two weeks ago, we have agreed and added a condition that any building in that RM three portion that has any portion thereof located within forty feet of a single-family residential property shall be one story in height. So it would be those buildings closest to or within forty feet of those single-family properties along the line that I think Jessica is tracking there for you. It's the same property lines that the fence would run along. So again, any buildings within forty feet of those single-family properties will be limited to one story. Then anything that might be two stories would be further on in, I guess, as you would say, the property that is proposed to be developed, RM three. And then lastly, I'll call your attention to development plan ten in the RM three portion. And again, as I said two weeks ago, it is the likely that the RM three development is going to be something that's done under single ownership. But in order to provide everyone additional assurances about uniformity of buildings and design and so forth, in the unlikely event it's not developed that way, we wanted to add a condition. And there you'll see the condition. As it's written, it states, "The developer will specify a uniform color scheme for all structures to be uniform in appearance. No more than one color of brick, stone, vinyl, cementitious siding, or similar cement-based materials. One roof color and uniform window and trim color. And there will only be a maximum of three plans for structures with eight residential units, which is the maximum in an RM three zone. And then one building plan for structures with four or fewer residential units." Those are the amendments that arose out of our hearing two weeks ago. Those are the amendments to which my clients have agreed to be bound. With that, I'll kind of reserve further comment and certainly take questions, except to say that we believe that these changes further solidify the compatibility between Judge Potter's proposed development in the surrounding areas that include everything from single-family to RM four to highway business to general business. So with that, I'll reserve comment until later and take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pardue. Commissioners, do you have any questions first before I open it up to the opposition?
I have one question, please. Mr. Pardue, does the applicant plan to maintain the fence? I don't think we specifically put that in there, but I know they're going to construct the fence, but will they also maintain that fence?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Clark, thank you for the question. The fence would be constructed, required to be constructed by the developer on the applicant's property. And as a part of that, the developer would be required to maintain it.
Okay, thank you. I thought so, but I thought I better ask that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners? Any of the opposition have questions concerning Mr. Pardue's testimony? No questions? Do we have questions? Nick Heller, yes.
Yes. So, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm just going to, no, sir, you were sworn in at the beginning of this meeting at the last date. So just remember, you're still sworn in. You can ask your question.
So the forty-foot restriction, so you could put a two-story building at forty-one feet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what is the, why not have it just be one owner, all the apartments?
At this point, Mr. Heller, my client is unable to commit. Again, we understand that it's our intention that the property be developed under single ownership. But there does remain, I guess, a possibility that it's not. So at this point, we're just not able to commit to that type of condition. However, we feel as though we've addressed any concerns with that type of issue by adding the condition pertaining to uniformity in design and appearance of the structure that might exist in that RM three portion.
It seems to be a very common theme throughout Bowling Green when you divide up these apartments. They decline very, very quickly because there's not one boss taking care of everything.
Have someone else with a question?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Will Heller has a question, and then we have one after me.
Yes, sir.
Hi, can we just have the staff zoom in on the apartment so that we can see the red line a little bit more? In the RM three section, if we could just have that bigger?
Just a second.
It's okay. It's a big PDF. What is that red line?
Sorry, too close.
What is the red line that runs on the border of the Bryant property and the Heller property and the Lloyd property? What does the red line represent?
Yes, sir. So as you'll recall from a couple of weeks ago, there was discussion about the zoning ordinance, which requires a minimum of a ten-foot buffer in a circumstance like this. We have agreed to actually a twenty-foot, what we'll call no development zone. And that is our way of saying there's a twenty-foot buffer in the RM three portion in those single-family residences. That's the black line that you see tracking from the north, then to the east, then down to the south. The red line marks ten feet. And as you'll recall from our development plan conditions, we have agreed and have sort of called that for purposes of the concept plan, a tree protection zone. Within that ten-foot area running along the property line that is heavily wooded, we have agreed to a condition that would require us to preserve all trees that are at least ten feet in diameter from six feet off the ground within that area. That is what the red line depicts. That is the ten-foot tree protection zone.
Yeah, for correction, I think you mean six inches off the ground, and that's fine. I see on there
Yes, thank you. Not sixteen, it's six inches.
And I'm guessing there's not been a canvassing of this wooded area to see how many trees that would remove that hasn't been done yet, correct?
We've not counted the trees, no, sir.
Okay, and it looks like where it says eight-foot-tall wooden fence, it's pointing to the thicker black line on the outside? Is that fence proposed to be on the property lines or inset into your client's property?
I can't speak to that. It'll probably depend on how many trees will be required to remain in that area as we've agreed to preserve. It will be, if it's not on the property line, it will be located on the applicant's property. How far, I can't say.
But we still do not know at this point, correct?
Well, it has to be constructed, which we've committed to. And we're not going to put it over on, we obviously aren't going to put it over on any of those adjacent properties. So it'll be, you know, something the developer will have to look at in terms of the obligation to preserve those trees along the property line and exactly how the fence can be to be configured at the same time as, you know, we are to preserve those trees.
Okay, and thank you for the updates to the development plan conditions. I just want to cover a couple of questions on that that I had real quick about the general business zone. You all added packaged liquor stores, correct, as something that would be prohibited from being there?
That's correct.
But there would still be available for your client to build strip malls, fast food restaurants, and any type of gas station that they wanted.
I'm not exactly sure what's meant by when you use the term strip mall. Now, there is the capability of developing that portion with retail uses. There is, as I understand, within the general business zoning category, permissible use for restaurants. Um, there is, as I understand, uh, within the general business zoning category, a permissible use for restaurants. Uh, and there is a permissible use for uh, fuel or or gas stations up to a certain level. I think it's a certain number of pumps. It's less.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's four pumps. It's not the highway. It's the g- it's the general business kind of for the city one with less pumps, yeah, I understand that.
Guess, maybe similar to what, again, would be right there across the street and would share an intersection with this proposed development. Uh, that's shown there in the top-left portion of the screen.
But um, most of what I just named, fast food restaurants, uh, strip centers or strip malls for retail or other types of businesses a- and fuel stations. Those are all available for you all to still build, but none of that is being shown here, correct?
Again, I'm not exactly sure what the term strip mall means, um.
You know, your client, your client presented that in their pre-application documentation as a strip center, so I'm just going on what you all put in there.
Well, you know, I guess I would, I would say that any of those uh, structures that are shown there in the concept plan could represent retail space. Um, they could likewise represent um, office space as well, but we're not, we're not hiding from the, the fact that it, that in, you'll recall our traffic impact study even assumed uh, you know, you kept hearing the term worst-case scenario for traffic, even assumed that that it could be developed entirely as residential. I'm sorry, as uh, as a retail.
Um, yeah.
And that the, the, the way it's depicted on the concept plan, uh, could be a portion of, of retail and office uses.
Sure, um, and so I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear here in understanding that all the items you've listed in the development plan conditions that are prohibited, we understand that, but to this point we, your client and we have no understanding what you are, are looking to build in the general business section at all at this point still. Is that correct?
Um, office, retail, or any other use permitted in the general business zone, all of which would uh, be totally compatible with the hundred and some odd businesses that someone, the list that someone submitted two weeks ago that that, that are situated within a half mile from this property.
Yeah, that's compatibility. I'm not covering that. That's, that's, I, I'm just saying that the, the, the items you're willing to say that you all could build there, we don't have businesses that have already latched on or you all are in contact with that you could say this is gonna be a bank, this is gonna be a dentist office. We don't have any of that knowledge, correct?
That's correct. There have been preliminary discussions, but make no mistake, we do not have specific users tied to uh, any of the sections of the proposed general business development.
Yeah, so in, in essence, then, it could just be four gas stations or three gas stations and a fast food. That's a possibility, correct?
Theoretically, yes. Practically, I have a hard time uh, envisioning that.
Those are profitable, those are profitable centers of business. I do not have a hard time envisioning that. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to ask a question to the applicant?
Yes.
If, your name, please?
Andrea Clan.
Yes, ma'am, and I believe that you were sworn in at the last meeting, so you can go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, if this were to go through, do you know who the developer would be at this point?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, this is Frank Steinbach. I have questions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, first of all, good evening, uh, Mr. Pardue. See you. Hope you're well.
Yes, sir, you too.
I want to ask you a few questions about the uh, concept plan in order to uh, clear it up. Uh, first of all, with respect to the con- concept plan, uh, the, am I not correct that the black line that you show, uh, beginning on Highland Way, running south and then east and then south again, is the forty-foot single-story height restriction, correct? That's what your label says on the right-hand side.
That's correct, and if I spoke, misspoke about that earlier, I apologize. That is the forty feet from the property line.
Yes, well, you understand, I'm not trying to help you. I just want to get the record straight about um.
Understood.
Where the lines are, and then the set, the middle line, the red line is the boundary of the twenty-foot no-development area, correct?
That looks right, yes, sir.
Then inside that, there's a white line that is the ten-foot tree protection zone, correct?
I, I think you're right. I don't know if there's a white line in there or not. I, though I'm up, I think I see it, yes.
There is.
Yes, point being there, you know, it's a, as it's indicate, yeah, it's a green, there it is, it's a green line. Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Yes, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to confuse anybody. I think it's pretty clearly stated on the concept plan, the revised concept plan, the, the actual distances of the of the different buffers, the tree protection area and the no-development zone, and then the forty, the forty feet. If I was mistaken as to let, identifying wh- where those lines were, I apologize. I wasn't trying to confuse anybody.
Okay, now, with respect to the fence, am I correct, well, am I correct that uh, Potter or Judge Potter has committed that the fence itself will not be placed on uh, the property of the adjoining landowners? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Right, and can we put that in the development plan conditions as a further modification to the proposed RM three uh, zoning area?
If we need to, yes.
Well, I'm asking, I'm not sure what that means. What I would like to request is that, that the um, the uh, the folks that are putting forth the application agree that the fence will be built on the Potter-Harnett property and will not be built on the property of any of the landowners or on their property line, meaning that there will be some distance between the property line of the o- owners uh, of lots eleven, twelve, and thirteen and the fence.
It, it, I'm not sure that, under any circumstances, we would be permitted to build it on an adjacent property, so, you know, if we need to specify that in the conditions, we can, but it, it, it's it's gonna either be constructed um, on the line or on the, on the, on Judge Potter's property.
Well, uh, and what I'm asking, what I'm su- suggesting is that for clarity, the fence be put on the property of Pa- Potter or Hornet, as the case may be, and I want to know.
We can do that. We can add that um, that language in there. Sure.
Next, with respect to the uh, with respect to the uh, development plan conditions, the proposed amendments for the uh, development plan conditions to the RM three area. First of all, we appreciate that you've agreed to, that Judge Potter's agreed to build the fence, and Judge Potter and Mr. Hornet agreed to build the fence. But I would like to put in the development plan conditions that the uh, that the Potter-Harnett group will be responsible for the cost of the materials and labor, labor to build the fence, and then the cost of the routine maintenance and repairs necessary uh, for the fence as time goes on. I want to know if you'll agree to that.
Hey, Tad, let me ask you a question. Do y'all, y'all, do y'all see yourself turning this over to an HO, having an HOA for these units?
I don't know, um, obviously they're under single ownership, probably not. You know, uh, the developer, if it's ultimately not Judge Potter, Mr. and Mrs. Hornet, is gonna be on the hook to construct the fence, maintain the fence. I mean, I think that's assumed or presumed. I don't feel it's necessary to put that in the conditions, because again, I think that's I think that's assumed, just like the, just like the fact that it, that, that we can't construct it on someone else's property.
Sure.
Well, this is Frank Steinback. H- how about if we did this? Uh, I, I would like to suggest that the, the developer, the, the present developer, uh, Judge Potter and Mr. Hornet uh, agree to maintain the fence in a reasonable, a reasonably good condition. Can we do that? So we'll have some assurance that somebody doesn't go in there, build a fence, and then just leave it uh, alone for fifteen or twenty years and not repair it. I have a fence myself, and it needs to be repaired once in a while and maintained. Do you agree to that?
Before, before that's answered, let me just interject something here. So those will be property maintenance issues. Development plan conditions are enforced by the uh, planning commission staff as part of the zoning ordinance, essentially. Um, what we're doing would be assigning property maintenance uh, issues which are currently the City of Bowling Green code enforcement staff. Uh, and as part of their nuisance codes and their property maintenance codes, so I don't necessarily believe that that would be appropriate to add that uh, in, into the development plan conditions. And then the second piece of that is, we uh, do have building permit review, uh, including fence permits a- as well as the City of Bowling Green does, and we cannot approve instruction on someone else's property without that person's signature, so they would have to be party to that building permit, so I just hesitant, I just wanted to state that because I'm hesitant to assign uh, other people's duties and jobs to the planning commission unnecessarily through the development plan condition process.
Well, I certainly didn't intentionally mean to assign duties to the zoning commission that did not belong to the commission. I was just trying to get a practical result where we had a commitment from a developer to to do something good with respect to the fence, at least as we looked at it. Uh, but I, I, I respect what the, um, what the director said. Now we'll move on to uh, another question. This relates to the seven-point-five, eight acres. Uh, what I would like to do, um, um, Mr. Pardue is, is ask uh, Judge Potter and Mr. Hornet whether or not, and I do understand, I do under- I'm sorry, I do understand the, the difficulty with respect to the term strip mall. Is that me doing that, um?
No, sir, we had some interference. I muted them.
I understand the, 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 the difficulty in defending the, in, in defining strip malls. However, fast food restaurants and fuel stations are mentioned specifically uh, in the zoning ordinance, and I would like to ask if uh, Judge Potter and Mr. Hornet would consider agreeing to no fast food restaurants or any type of fuel station uh, in the general, what likely will be the general uh, business area. One reason for making that request is fast food restaurants and fuel stations, there are lots of them, stay open long hours as do liquor stores. They generate lots of traffic, which we're trying to avoid at least somewhat in this new division. And quite frankly, fast food restaurants and fuel stations along Nashville Road don't seem to me to add anything to economic development and certainly aren't compatible with the balance of the neighborhood, but setting that aside, uh, uh, it seems to me reasonable for us to request and for you to consider eliminating fast food restaurants and fuel stations along with liquor stores from the list, uh, and adding those to the list of, of businesses which will be prohibited uh, in that zone going forward.
Uh, Mr. Steinback, that is a uh, request that uh, has, you had previously made outside the scope of the hearing. Um, and I, and I had prior to tonight discussed that with Judge Potter, Mr. and Mrs. Hornet, and they're not in agreement at this time to include uh, those among the prohibited uses in the amended development plan conditions.
Hey, Ta- hey, Tad, let me ask you this. Um, what about if we put some kind of hours around them? I think one of the concerns I just heard was them being open, you know, extremely late. What about, would y'all consider any kind of you know, six AM to midnight, or six AM to eleven, some kind of hourly uh, of something around them?
Sure, so, um, some thought has been given to that, Commissioner Volker, and I know that the uh, property that would share an intersection with this proposed development of the fuel station right there at the corner of Emmett Nashville Road has hours of five AM to midnight.
Um, would y'all be, would y'all consider, would, would y'all be okay with putting the same hours as that?
I'm getting positive nods of the head and, and thumbs up there, so I think I can speak on behalf of my client and commit to that at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Ted, I'm sorry, I did not, Mr. Pardue, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the, those hours. That was five AM till midnight?
Yes, sir. And again, that's, that's consistent. We kind of looked around at surrounding uses of a similar nature, and so I'm understanding that that's the, those are the operating hours of the property right across the street.
So you're saying any business along the Nashville Road, general business area that's being requested will have hours from five AM to midnight on any of those properties, correct?
Y- yes, ma'am, and we're not saying that, or in any way proposing that, that, that every uh, commercial use that, that ends up being developed there will have those hours. Uh, those will be the, the, I guess, that will be the maximum scope of hours that those businesses will allow, be allowed to remain open, but I'm certain that you know, if, if it is an office, uh, an office retail, you know, they're not gonna maintain hours five AM to midnight. Uh, those will be more like normal business hours. Uh, but for the se- for the sake of limiting the maximum scope, um, I have a, I have an agreement here by Judge Potter and Mr. and Mrs. Hornet to commit to five AM to midnight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pardue, would that be a new condition number twelve on the general business?
On the general business, yes, ma'am.
Hours of operations will be limited to five AM to midnight.
And uh, I thought that I heard earlier a commitment to add to the uh, jet, to the uh, RM three zone, a commitment that the maintenance aside, uh, Potter would agree, Potter-Harnett would agree to pay the cost of the materials and labor to build the fence uh, in addition to building it itself. That is, those costs are not uh, shifted any, to any of the opposition.
On their property, they'll have to pay for it.
That's correct.
I mean, they can't get the building permit without that. That'd be, that'd be their responsibility.
I understand. Okay, that's fine, thank you very much. Uh, now then, uh, one other question, a couple other questions, Ted, uh, Mr. Pardue, now that we're talking about this a little bit, I, I want to know if i- if you consider the um, the twenty-five-foot rear setback and side setback lines to be applicable to the Potter project?
Not totally sure. I understand that. Can you, have you rephrased it or say it another way?
Sure, Article four, Section four-point-five-point-four, capital C, Section eight, provides that development in any RM two, RM three, or RM four district adjacent to the boundary of a single-family residential zoning district or single-family residential use shall have a side and rear yard setback of twenty-five feet. I want to know if you consider that regulation applicable to the RM three zoning area that you are proposing? the RM three zoning area that you are proposing to five point nine one acres?
Or is that, are you reading that from the zoning ordinance, Mr. Steinback?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I, I think it goes without saying, we'll, we'll be required to comply with all applicable, applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance when the property is developed. I'm not sure that it's necessary that that be a condition. I think that's, I think that's a requirement absent there being a condition.
Well, I don't know that I disagree with that, but the no build zone you've got right now is twenty feet. And most of these, I don't think these buildings are gonna be fronting, fronting the, the boundary lines. I think you might have a side, some side boundaries, but I don't think the frontage is. I'm just wondering if you'll agree to a twenty-five foot no build zone instead of a twenty-foot no build zone? Well, it seems to me that, it seems to me, I don't, to ask the question, can you give me any reason why the, the no build zone should not be twenty-five feet?
We'll, I, I guess it would be dependent upon how, how it's developed, how, how buildings are situated and configured. But I, I guess I'll just say this, I, we will comply with the, all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that includes minimum setbacks for any structure existing in, in the RM three portion.
Well, I have come to understand that one thing that's important in connection with the zoning matters in Bowling Green, I think this is actually a good idea, is that things agreed to in the commission, like you're saying, in the commission hearings, like you're saying now, should, if at all possible, be incorporated into the development plan conditions. So that's a very clear understanding about it. And that's, and that's all I'm asking be done here.
Right.
If you take the patio homes that are shown in the northern portion of the development, those obviously face on, uh, face generally northwest. They back up to the Bryant line. So I'm just asking for a, an agreement that that no build zone is gonna be twenty-five feet from the property lines, the twenty.
Mr. Steinback, our staff would not be allowed to approve any permit that's applied for that does not meet, where the buildings proposed do not meet that twenty-five foot setback. That is required.
And Ms. Hurt, correct me if I'm wrong, but ordinarily, a condition that would mirror something required in the zoning ordinance is typically not required by the staff to be included among the development plan conditions. Does that make sense?
Correct, development plan conditions are typically those items that are above and beyond what the minimum standards or minimum requirements are. So we wouldn't need a condition for something that's required because our staff is going, going to enforce the ordinance in any future permit review.
Yeah, because the only way that he could build the twenty, he'd have to come back for variance.
Right.
Right, which would require another public hearing.
That's right, that's right.
Well, this is Frank Steinback, I will defer to Rachel. But, but I will say this with respect to the development plan conditions we have. We do have a reservation as the development plan condition. Or let me ask it this way, I'm sorry, Mr. Pardue, isn't it correct that we do have in the development plan conditions now provisions that relate to sinkhole?
That's correct. For both, for both zoning areas, proposed zoning areas.
That would be similar to what I'm requesting here, would it not? It's similar, it's a similar concept, is it not? That is, you have to require, you have to comply with the requirements concerning sinkholes, whether it's in your development plan conditions or not, correct?
Yes, I, I'd, I'd ask maybe Ms. Hurt or Mr. Peterson on this. I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure what the zoning ordinance requires as it pertains to sinkholes.
There aren't any standards in the zoning ordinance that pertain to sinkholes. That would come at the engineering stage of the development and be in coordination with the Public Works Department.
That, that was, that was what I thought, but I didn't want to misspeak on that. So the, again, the condition that would require us to, to get Public Works involved as it pertained to sinkholes is not something that's otherwise in the zoning ordinance or required by the zoning ordinance. So we had to make it a condition.
Mr. Pardue, I appreciate that answer. Now, given your answer, would you agree to insert a similar provision into the development plan conditions with respect to drainage? In as much as drainage is controlled by stormwater management, which is a division of the Department of Public Works? In other words, have a provision similar to what you've got about, about sinkholes in your development plan conditions? In as much as the development, in as much as the rules and regulations for drainage are not part, part of the zoning ordinance, just like the rules and regulations for sinkholes are not part of the zoning ordinance?
Drainage is a matter, Mr. Steinback, that is contained in the subdivision regulations and will be a part of the review process that this development goes through at the time the subdivision clap is presented. So drainage will be dealt with at subdivision review. Stormwater maintenance will be reviewed by Public Works. And I don't think we need to burden the record with development plan conditions that deal with that. And that's not just a frivolous thought. Practically speaking, is terribly confusing to future owners and lenders when they come across those provisions that are dealt with in the ordinance.
Those are the questions I have, thank you very much for your help, Mr. Pardue, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Steinback.
Do we have anyone else in the audience with a question concerning Mr. Pardue's changes on the development plan?
We do have two more people with their hands raised. I'll just say lady, lady Heller is first on the screen, so I'll let her go first. I don't know your name, sorry.
If you'd state your name for us, please.
Elizabeth Heller, I was sworn in at the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am, I recognize the name, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. And looking at the map here, am I correct in saying that the development would have traffic funneled out onto Highland Way from business? The parking lot, Mr. Pardue?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're talking about there when you say traffic funneled out onto Highland Way?
From the parking lot development of the business that's being proposed?
They could go out that way.
So there is a, yes, there is a, an ingress egress on the north end of the proposed general business section that would allow for vehicles to come in and out there. And, you know, as, as, as we've kind of laid out and as our traffic impact study laid out, eventually when this road realignment is completed by combination of the developer, the city and the state, that, that enter, that intersection there at the, what is now Highland Way will be a right in, right out only. So those vehicles that choose to, to gain access to that, that business there on the corner, yes, they-
Will be coming through the neighborhood.
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm referring to the vehicles that are coming in and out of that business from Nashville Road.
Okay.
I, I guess in terms of turning right onto Highland Way, you know, that, that would be a question for the transportation cabinet in terms-
I'm just saying they could cut, cut through Highland to get into the back of the business.
That is correct, just as they could if they used the realigned road to get there. Either way, they're getting to the same spot, they're all coming, they're coming from the same direction, getting to the same spot, it's just which direction do they choose to use? And again, we-
There's multiple business exits then.
And let me point out, I don't think there's been any amendment to the traffic access made since our last meeting. And if my memory is correct, we've been through this, these issues repeatedly. So unless there's something new on this issue, I think we're ready to move on.
Pardon me, I was just getting clarification.
I, I apologize, I'm just trying to keep things underway.
And Nick Keller, you had an additional question? Yes, sir. You're muted.
I'm pretty sure we did not discuss in-depth this connectivity that, that Ms. Heller just talked about right, right on the Highland. Because before, before the road is completed, if this is completed, everyone is gonna dump out on that little section. I know the road's far off, but if that can, if that's connected to Highland, this whole area is gonna come out right there before the road's completed. That, that's what will happen.
And, and the commission, the commission will recall the testimony and if they're confused about it, I know they'll ask questions.
And, and I'll just add, as part of the, the, the development of the, the road, the extension of Emmett from Nashville Road will be constructed there up to the point where you see it shaded. That'll be the primary access to the general business portion.
I had another comment. So if this general business part goes through this first part, you can still put a gas station on Highland Way. It just must face Nashville Road. So you could put a gas station, butt it up right next to Highland Way where the road is gonna connect to Highland. You could put a gas station right there as long as it's facing Highland Way, or Nashville Road, excuse me.
Yes, I recall this coming up two weeks ago, and yes, the, the answer to that is, is yes, under the-
So you're basically putting a gas station into a neighborhood?
It, it was, that was the answer two weeks ago, and it continues to be the answer tonight.
Okay, also, I think there was a miss, misspoke. He said something about a diameter tree of ten foot. I just want clarification that the diameter tree of ten inches will not be cut, correct?
It's ten inches, six inches off the ground, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Pardue? No other questions, then we will give Mr. Steinback his ten minutes for a presentation. Mr. Steinback?
Frank, you're muted.
I apologize, I muted myself trying to not, so that my carryover, no, no, no noise wouldn't get involved in your all-spraying presentation, I forgot to unmute it. Jessica, could you put up page one, you know, you already got, or have you, thank you very much. My ten minutes will not take as long as I had anticipated because I've already talked with Mr. Pardue about some of these matters. First of all, and with respect to the, the amendments to the, the development conditions, the last time we quit when the hour was late and people wanted to see exactly what was in these conditions, and we've now been given the opportunity to do that. With respect to the seven point five eight acres, in terms of those matters addressed in the amendments to the, the development plan conditions, my clients request that fast food restaurants of, and fuel stations of any type not be permitted in the seven point five eight acres. We understand about the difficulty of defining strip malls and I understand that that term is not addressed in the zoning ordinance itself. So we would limit our request to fast food restaurants or fuel, fuel stations of any type for the reasons that have been given by the folks that have talked, spoken here this evening. Now, going down now to the questions involving, or the issues involving the five point nine one acres and again, addressing the issue, the issues of the development plan condition and how they have been amended. We have heretofore discussed the issue about the fence, and there's no need to address that any further. It sounds as if we have discussed and resolved the issues involving the twenty-five foot rear and side setbacks. However, with respect to the screening changes that were made, my clients suggest that those screening changes are inadequate. And Jessica, it looks like you're already down to page two, thank you very much. If you could drop to additional screening is inadequate, I would appreciate it on page two. Up just a little bit higher. There you go, up a little more. Right at the bottom of page one, top of page two.
This is bottom of page one.
First of all, it's the position of my clients with respect to the amendments that have been made, that they, that they do the wrong thing in, in terms of the, the setbacks, the no build zone. We think the twenty-foot no build zone should be eliminated, that should be twenty-five feet. I think that's been agreed to. The tree saving provision is, in my view, meaningless. The reason it is meaningless, and Mr. Pardue actually talked about this, it's the first time we ever had a conversation, the tree saving provision is, in my view, meaningless because with respect to the areas south of the lots eleven and twelve, which are the lots involved, eleven and twelve of Hillview addition, there are very few, few, if any, trees which are more than, or which are ten inches or more in diameter at six inches from the stump in that area. So what that means is that nothing is left, or nothing of significance is left if all you leave is the trees that are ten inches in diameter and larger. So what we have proposed is a twenty-five foot no build zone that is on the west boundaries cleared of all vegetation and then planted with cedars of Lebanon, evergreens, ten feet from the fence and ten feet apart, which is different from what we had proposed before. Secondly, with respect to the southern boundaries, we propose again, instead of a, I think, a forty-five foot no build zone, a twenty-five foot no build zone adjacent to the south boundaries of lots eleven and twelve, leaving all vegetation in place with, and, and we think that that plus the fence will avoid the type of view that you all looked at during the initial presentation in the pictures presented by Ms. Simmons. The point being here that it would be good to do something in that area, especially the south boundaries of the, the Heller and Bryant properties, which actually created some privacy. And my point is that if you do what is proposed now, you're not going to create any privacy that's in that south boundary. Simply is not going to happen. Next, I think that, that, that I would be remiss if I did not mention to you the, the density, what I see is the density requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance, but I will address those rather than now since they weren't directly addressed in the amendments. I'll address those in my closing. Finally, with respect to drainage, we have, we have addressed those issues and I understand the resolutions with respect to those issues. And with that, I will reserve any bounds of my time depending on Mr. Pardue's later presentations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Steinbach before we turn that over to Mr. Pardue? No questions? Mr. Pardue, do you have any questions of Mr. Steinbach?
No ma'am, I do not.
Anyone in the audience? Any questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, in regards to the provisions, and I'm sorry that I'm just now seeing them, with the Cedars of Lebanon. Are you all trying to make a visual buffer that kind of mimics what Pine Grove subdivision did to block off Nashville Road? Is that your intent? Because you're using the same trees they did, so are you trying to just make a larger visual buffer, is that the idea?
I, I have no knowledge or information about the subdivision to which you are referring. What we are trying to do here is establish. Not so much the protection aspect of buffering, which is, which is addressed in large part by the fence, but the visual. Function of buffering and to my way of thinking, a good way to do that, do that is to use these. Cedars of Lebanon evergreens, which grow quite large and therefore enhance any buffer. That you otherwise might have, so if you place those in that area, you further. Permit privacy, whether or not you permit additional protection. By the addition of the trees is questionable, but you certainly, certainly protect or. Advance the notion of privacy, which I think is important to all these residents and which is in my view important, especially in an infill, infill build. Which this is in helping to create the, what I would call the. Clear compatibility set forth in the comprehensive plan with respect to. Issues involving infill developments such as we're looking at today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Steinbach? Nothing else, then we will allow Mr. Will Heller the ten minutes to make his presentation in response to the amendments.
Okay, thank you very much for the time to speak, I'm very appreciative of you all allowing me to have this extra time. And I'll try to move through it quick, I got way less slides than last time. So if we could just go to number two. It's a simply an overview of what we're trying to accomplish with this presentation. I am not representing anyone, I'm just representing myself. Page three, please. I have several questions for staff during my presentation, so for staff, Ms. Rachel Hurd. As a general question, if I had several quarters in my hand, how many would that be? Would that be three quarters, ten quarters, how many in your estimation is several represented?
I don't know, more than three or four.
Okay, perfect, have you physically walked the property in question?
No.
Okay, how were you or the other CCP staff able to proceed with evaluating the general? Development plan as being in or out of compliance with PR one point seven if you have not walked? And physically been on this property?
Well, we use aerial photos in, in doing our evaluation.
But who's we?
The staff.
I'm, I'm sorry, in specifics for this development, was that you or another staff member?
It was our entire staff, we all reviewed the application together.
Excellent, so you all reviewed the application from the TAD's group there, the Potter, the Potter-Harned. And then as a group without visiting the property, just using what they submitted. You were able to deduce that they were in compliance with PR one point seven, correct?
I believe the staff report says that it's generally in compliance and I'll also point out that. In the compliance summary, those are truly just suggested motions, so it's not that what the staff says in our report is. Absolute final, because ultimately the planning commission has to make the decision and so. If they feel otherwise, they can certainly make that decision, so if they feel that we have placed an item in compliance. And they feel that it is not, they are certainly welcome to make a motion with that item noted as not in compliance.
Oh, excellent, but you all as the staff have already noted. That it was in compliance because you put it in that column and you did not put an asterisk next to it saying that it. That the planning commission should determine compliance with these items. On page nine of the, of staff report, it actually says that. PR one point seven is in compliant and only. The planning commission should determine compliance of the items which are then asterisked as the not in compliance or in compliance items. So in a way, the staff report is actually saying that this is in compliance. And the planning commission does not need to determine it because it doesn't have an asterisk next to it, is that correct?
I, I think you're getting in, I mean, like I said, we stated that it's generally in compliance. In the comprehensive plan review section. And if at any time in any staff report for any zone change application, if the planning commission feels that we have misevaluated or misinterpreted. What our comprehensive plan says, they are certainly welcome to substitute their judgment in making any recommendation on any application.
Excellent, excellent, so as part of the staff that reviewed this, how many trees would you say are on the lots combined in total in your opinion?
Several.
So three to four then, because you stated that several means.
No, I said it would be at least three or four, I didn't say that, in my mind, three is a few, so more than three would be several.
Mr. Heller, don't play games with her, don't play games with her, I mean, you, you, you're trying to trick her and asking how many quarters in a hand. She, she gave you the best answer she can.
Okay, can we go ahead and move to the next slide then? So here is a Google image of the same area, not enhanced, simply taken. Not in the winter months, so that we can fully see the tree canopy, you can go back to the next, the slide before, slide three, please. This is what was represented that the staff looked at to make their determinations about the trees. As you can see, there's not a lot of green on there, go to slide four, please. And in this slide, we can see that nearly all of the property. Is covered with tree canopy at this point, there is a, there is a field back where they're looking to put the apartments, but pretty much everything else is tree canopy. So is there any place that someone can point out in the general development plan, a page number in the staff report or anything? Where the applicant states how many trees they will be planting and what type of trees those are?
That information is not in the staff report, no.
Okay.
Ultimately, if this project moves forward, they'll be required to submit landscape plans and at that time we'll verify that. The proper number of plannings are included based on. Linear footage and they'll have to select approved plannings from our master plan list.
Excellent. So the point is, we can see that. It, in the staff report where they are reviewing an image. That image was provided by the applicant, that is what they used to determine whether things were in and out of compliance, especially PR one point seven. And it does not show the actual tree canopy that exists for around eight and a half months or nine months out of the year. Okay.
Let me just clarify that the aerial views that we look at are from our own data that we have in-house. So I'm aware that the, the aerial that you had in the screen before was in the winter. But we can still, I mean, we can still tell that there were trees there, even though that some of the trees in the aerial were deciduous trees.
Excellent, okay, slide five, please. So land use two point one point four was also deemed in compliance with no asterisk. You can read right there, that's pulled from the Focus twenty thirty master plan. This is, this was deemed, this property development as set forth in the staff report was deemed to promote preservation of existing trees. On the property before, during and after the development, but. Obviously, most of the trees on the property, from what you can tell in the general business section, will be taken down, there won't be any on the frontage road of Nashville Road. And all throughout where the roads need to be, they will be mowed down or, or cut down or removed. And there has not been any plan to put them back up, so slide six. Same here, the NCR one point one point six was given to them as in compliant, protecting existing trees, slide seven. Okay, again, just goes on, slide eight, there we go. Okay, so in this. What we're looking at here is an overhead shot with the sinkholes marked. And for NCR one point one, we're looking at whether or not the physical area is suit, is suitable. Given the natural resources on it and obviously sinkholes and trees and those things are considered natural resources. I note that one of the sinkholes I put on here is actually on Ms. Sherry Bryant's property, it's not part of this proposal, but because it is so large, it is worth noting in the area. Because the development will for, for sure affect it in some way, okay, slide eight. So now we get into this, okay. Staff Rachel or any staff that has knowledge of this, are you all aware of any cave openings? On this property or with one, or within one mile of the proposed development? Not a sinkhole, but just a cave opening?
I didn't research the caves within a mile of this property, no.
Is anyone on the CCP staff aware of what caused the Corvette museum collapse in Cave Inn back in two thousand fourteen? Sounds like a no, the Dishman Lane collapse near Lost River Cave in twenty, two thousand two? Or the Dairy Queen parking lot collapse in the late nineties? I mentioned the latter two because those are very close to this development. Would it surprise anyone on the staff if all of those were caused by constructions put on top of a sinkhole and cave opening?
Sir, we don't do the engineering for these projects, they hire engineers to go in and do this, they take care of that. So we're not as planning commissioners. Going to look at engineering because we know that the engineers are going to take care of that.
Yeah, I'm fully aware, I'm fully aware of that, thank you for making that comment. My point is that some of the items that are deemed as in compliance that I want people to consider. Should be considering that there is a likelihood that this development is being built on top of a cave. And it doesn't seem to me as a concerned homeowner with a sinkhole in my own backyard. That a lot of. Planning has been put forth as there are multiple cave openings to large caves within one mile. And I'm not considering Lost River Cave because that's further than one mile away. That being said, there are three large sinkholes in this area, which most people who study caves. Will determine that those sinkholes drain groundwater from the area, which then leads to a cave, that's my whole point. Slide ten, please.
You have one minute and I did pause it during the question.
Thank you very much, so basically here I'd like to cover logical future planning as needed. Slide eleven, please. Staff member Hurd, Rachel. From what I can tell, by studying everything I've been able to study, the pink shows where sidewalks were, will be, is this about correct? Oh, sidewalks or greenways, the, and I've also went ahead and put in the future one connecting the junior high.
Well, I guess I can speak to the sidewalks that are shown on the newly proposed extension into the development. Now, the greenway along the bottom or southern side, that is. Just a concept at this point in time, so there's. No timeline as to whether or not that would be constructed, now I'm not aware of sidewalks. I think there's a sidewalk on one side of Emmett, but I don't know that there's one on the north side.
From, from, I don't mean to interrupt, from my research, it shows that when the corridor expansion goes through, they will be. Putting sidewalks in these areas after the corridor, or, or during the corridor expansion of Nashville Road. And then in the, in the Pardue's group's development plan conditions, they already mentioned about the little inset entrance road having sidewalks on both sides, I think that's great. Slide twelve, please. So instead of planning to connect those sidewalks, it seems that. The, the applicant group is just going to continue the bike lane and do away with the sidewalks on their side of the property. And that just didn't seem logical to me, so I wanted to point out. If anyone has ever stood in that bike lane, kind of where this Emmett Road intersection is going to be, it is very dangerous as cars whiz by. I think the logical.
Time is up, so you may want to wrap it up.
Okay, I think the logical thing would be to continue the sidewalk instead of removing it for what will be pedestrians here. Slide thirteen, it's just one more? Yeah, actually, I'm done, I'm good, thank you very much for the time, I appreciate everyone for listening.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment? Before we go into the closing statements by each of the attorneys? Did anyone have a question to Mr. Heller concerning his presentation? Neither?
I have a comment.
Yes.
My name is Jesse Shadow and I was not sworn in.
Okay, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Jesse Robert Shadowan, six oh eight Highland Way, Bowling Green, Kentucky, four two oh four.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir.
Yes, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, go ahead.
I just have one comment. So if you could bring up the map of the proposed design with the zoning. Lines drawn out. Thank you. I just think that. As far back as the rest of these, the specifically the R three zoning proposal property goes. I think that a lot of the properties along Highland Way near this proposal, as well as further down Nashville Road. For example, on the other side of the street, you have the gas station and you have the chiropractor's office. And on the near side. You don't have anything yet, but that space is single family residential property, however. On the Campbell Lane side of Nashville Road, that has all been commercialized and right after the roundabout. At the other end is commercialized as well, so I think looking towards the future. We, there's definitely a trend that it's, the commercialization is meeting in the middle and is going to start pushing both sides of Nashville Road, so I think it's. It would be fair to all of the residents along Nashville Road that the committee think about. All the properties along this way be able to rezone in the future if they wanted to sell their property. For example. Yes.
This is Hamford. Excuse me for interrupting you. We're at a stage when we are giving folks an, an opportunity to ask Will Heller any questions about his presentation.
I believe there was a, she asked if there were any comments just in general before that, I just couldn't unmute in time.
We're. You'll, you'll have an opportunity in just a moment to make a closing argument and so I, it would help us if you do that then.
No, no problem, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? 10 minutes. Do we have any questions for Mr. Will Heller concerning his presentation tonight? No questions from the attorneys or anyone else? Commissioners? No questions. Now we have time for anyone else to make comments. And I believe Mr. Shadowing, if you'd like to go ahead and continue.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment to the rest of these properties that I think the committee should keep in mind that within a certain area of the Nashville Road front, that these properties be allowed to, if this rezoning goes through, to rezone in a similar manner. So on the other side of Highland, the properties on the Nashville Road front be allowed to rezone commercially. And then those approximately the same distance away from Nashville Road as this R3 be able to rezone to R3 as well. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
We have, we've got a couple of hands, I believe, raised. David Bryant, I believe. And we need to swear you in, sir. You'll state your name and address for us.
My name is David Bryant. Address is 872 Willing Way, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I did.
Thank you, sir. We have three minutes for a statement.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say, my name is David Bryant. I'm a nursing student and work in the emergency room full-time. I want to start by saying, I just think multifamily housing is incompatible with the nature of the established neighborhood that is this end of Highland Way. I grew up on Lot 11. You can see on that map there, right next to the apartments there. And it just raises a lot of concern for me for the new population of tenants who would be living in these proposed areas for the surrounding area, immediate surrounding area, and for pretty much that half end of Highland Way for whatever may come with a population of predominantly college students and the like. So I just wanted to say I am not in support of this.
Thank you, sir. And I see Nick Keller had his hand up. Yes, sir.
Just one final comment is I can completely wrap my mind around the general business wanting to rezone general business up against Nashville Road. Obviously, would not like to see it happen, but I can wrap my mind around it. I don't know how anyone can wrap their mind around putting RM3 directly next to RM1 that has been here for a very, very long time. You can approve the general business RM3 against Nashville Road, and you can deny the RM3 rezoning for lots nine and 10. I just, it's completely not compatible. And I've seen thousands of these meetings, and I've seen this denied for much less than what we're bringing. All these facts and all these different points of view, it's just not compatible to put RM3 directly next to RM1. And I would really like you to ask to not, to not change the zone change on that. Like I said, I can understand the general business up against Nashville Road, but RM3 next to RM1 that's been here forever, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Andrea Klein?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not on mute. Hello?
Yes, yes, ma'am. You had your hand raised. You had a statement or a question?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. I just wanted everybody to take a moment and just really think about what's about to happen, putting these multifamily homes in this single resident area right before this right-of-way is going to come in. They're just going to throw them in here. And in a decade or so, we may be looking at rundown ISOs if they are not properly maintained. We have no guarantee that they, you know, will be maintained and by who, and there may be multiple owners. So, you know, if this does go through and it happens, you know, is this the right thing for this area, this beautiful area in the city of Bowling Green? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have Catherine Shadow.
Hi. My name is Catherine Shadow. I live at 608 Highland Way, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
I briefly went to college in Cincinnati. And one of the reasons I came back to Bowling Green was because I didn't quite enjoy living in a big city, in the middle of a big city. And I'm concerned that putting the apartments up specifically will sort of change the neighborhood into sort of what I came back to get away from. And that will both affect our quality of life in the neighborhood and probably eventually like the property values and such. And I just, it seems like most of the people that are currently living at Highland Way do not want this to go through, and I hope you take that into consideration. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I just see the last name, Heller. I'm sorry, I don't know the first name.
Elizabeth.
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, I don't represent anyone but myself because I don't know how, but I did canvas our neighborhood, and I talked to about 70 neighbors with not a single person in favor of this. And the reason that I think you're seeing so many impassioned people for this is because of who the applicant is. Many people were like, it's a done deal. They're going to give him what he wants. I mean, if we hadn't wanted an attorney, we had to go out of town. So I just want to say that it seems like a done deal, and the optics on this are gross.
Beth Gafford? I think Gafford, I think I can read that. Yes, Gafford. Yes, ma'am. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Elizabeth Gafford, 2174 Nashville Road.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am. I swear to tell the truth. I just, I want to thank you all for staying up so late during our last meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you all. And I guess I just want to say that it's established neighborhoods like this that set Bowling Green apart and make it unique. There are jiffy loops and gas stations and multiplexes all over the place. But you can't just throw up another established neighborhood. So just would ask you to consider the value in that before changing it.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else before we hear from the attorneys? No one else? Then Mr. Sandback, you have three closing arguments.
I'm sorry, I was on mute there so that I wouldn't disturb anybody else. I appreciate your time. First of all, with respect to the 7.58 acres, my clients request that you make a condition to the rezoning to GB to add fast fuel and fuel stations to the list of no build businesses for that area. Secondly, we ask that you deny the amendment to the zoning map with respect to lots nine and 10 because without limitation, there have been no changes which yet have occurred in that area warranting amending the zoning map for lots nine and 10, 10 from RS1A to RM3. The evidence shows that the exception upon which lines is being placed notwithstanding. Third, and I think most important, I want to talk about what kind of project this is. This is an infill project. The comprehensive plan makes clear that density is an important factor in determining the clear compatibility required with respect to rezoning in an infill development. And if I could have page four of my slide presentation, please. Page four. That's the there you go. You have before you now the density map that was compiled by the staff before this procedure or before this hearing began. And the comprehensive plan states that or suggests that the average new development should not exceed the density by more than 50% of the surrounding area defined as that area located within 1,000-foot radius. And so what I did was I made the calculations to determine what the average density of the surrounding area was. And that turned out to be 3.4 dwelling units per acre. And if you multiply that by 1.5, which you would do in order to increase the area by 50%, you would get five-point dwelling units per acre in the RM3 area, not 13 units per acre. Now, another factor that you need to consider in connection with infill projects is what kind of property is it? This is a long-term residential area. And those are certainly taken good care of, so to speak, in connection with infill projects. And the demonstration must be, as I said a moment ago, clearly compatible. As others have said tonight, these apartments that are projected are not compatible, much less clearly compatible with the surrounding older neighborhood that we know as Hillview Edition. Thank you very much for your time.
And next, we'll hear from Mr. Pardue. Again, a three-minute closing statement.
So I hate to disappoint you, Madam Chair, but Mr. Pardue had to leave. This is Kevin Brooks, Mr. Pardue's partner. So you've got the junior varsity for the closing statement here. I'll take just a moment. I can't imagine that the members of the commission aren't entirely familiar with all of the facts about this proposed development and the neighborhood where it's going. So I won't belabor any of that. Sometimes I just think it's instructive to just go back, not to insult you, but just to go back and think of what the prism is through which you should view all of these facts. And that is compliance with the comprehensive plan. First part of that, as you know, I would, I dare say, the most important part, certainly a very important part, is the future land use map. And this proposal complies with the future land use map. And then we have the compatibility standard. And that's just not what is in the eye of the beholder. The comprehensive plan also tells you what you are to consider. And primary among that are the development plan conditions that we have proposed. We came with strong development plan conditions to lend this project to being compatible, and we've made substantial amendments. And so I never want to say to you that your jobs are easy because after this long hearing, it's not been easy. Having said that, I believe that the results should be clear, and we ask that you approve this application.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you all have any questions for staff? Anything you would like to comment on before I ask for a motion?
Chairman Runner, I would like to say one thing, please.
Yes, ma'am.
As of, how do I say this? I've been around the planning commission for a long time, and this has been a very long meeting. I feel like myself and all the other commissioners have listened to the applicant, to the neighbors, and to everyone that's been able to speak. Nothing is ever a done deal, and nothing's ever set up before this ever starts. I just want everyone to know that we consider each and every case that comes before us. We drive out there. We walk around where neighbors sometimes wonder what we're doing, but we're just looking. But I just want everyone to know that we take this serious. And this has been a very long and drawn-out procedure. And I think the applicants have gone above and beyond. And I just want the neighbors to know, we have listened to every single thing you've said. And thank you, everyone, for being patient, and we're ready to go. Thank you.
Sandy, I agree with what you just said.
I'll ask for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202011ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report and with the proposed new conditions that the applicants have agreed to. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, our requests of this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by all the witnesses in this public hearing.
Second.
Second, thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes.
Commissioner Unsell? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ballance? Commissioner Ballance?
No.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairwoman? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried with opposition, our recommendation will be for approval, and I thank you.
Ethics.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Now we are entering new business, the public hearing for our new business items. And the first item on tonight's agenda is 202101RWC. Gary E. and Dave Simpson have filed an application to close approximately 3,783 square feet of a portion of unapproved right-of-way located on South Main Street between 2020 and 2034 South Main Street in Smith's Grove.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman. There we go. Oh, sorry, went one too far. There's a little bit of a delay. Okay. I don't believe this case will take us till 1:00 a.m., so we should be good there. But normally, when I start these offices, we had a pre-app, but we do not have pre-application meetings for right-of-way closures. So you won't see that there. But I won't belabor this too much with the right-of-way closing. You see there on the first page, there are zoning ordinance requirements for applicants to meet, getting letters from the agencies listed there on pages one and two, among other items. And so I'll just state that the applicants have met all of the criteria in both the zoning ordinance as well as KRS 82.405. And the staff has also recommended the following conditions for approval. A plaque consolidating the closed right-of-way with the adjacent- A plaque consolidating the closed right of way with the adjacent properties must be recorded at the Warren County Courthouse within 120 days of final approval of the right of way closure by the Smith Grove City Commission. And such a plaque shall also include the easements as shown on the right of way closing exhibit and as noted in the agency letter from the Warren County Water District. So that's a, actually, that may be a typo. Rachel, can you tell me if that's a typo, since I don't see where we actually have a note on there from the Water District? I missed that earlier in my, in my review, but. But regardless, the applicants have met, have met all of the, the applicable items. And so that's all I have for the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Commissioners, do you have any questions? No questions? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? I'll ask for a motion, please.
Make a motion.
The motion.
Why do we close in docket number 202101RWC with the conditions as listed in the staff report? My motion is based on the findings of fact presented in the staff report and the testimony presented in this public hearing that the right of way closing is compliance with section 3.16 of the Warren County zoning ordinance.
Thank you, serving the second.
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 Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bram?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner. Yes, ma'am, and the motion carried. Next item, 202110 Flume, Edgehill Farms Incorporated and John Franklin Balance have filed an application, application for a future land use map amendment on portions of tracts of land containing approximately 2.42 acres located on, on a portion of 0302 and 332 Laurel Street and a portion of 0 Kentucky Street and Smith Grove from light industrial to neighborhood general commercial. And also on docket number 202119ZSG, those same applicants have filed to rezonate portions of tracts of land containing approximately 4.22 acres located at those same locations in Smith Grove from light industrial with the development plan conditions, heavy industrial and RS one A, which is single family residential, to light industrial and general business, both with general, general development plans. And then we'll have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. Before we get too much into the preliminaries on this one, I'm going to skip ahead. Apologize, there's a little bit of a delay. Okay, so just so we all know what we're talking about here, since this has got kind of a couple of different boundaries going on. For the future land use map amendment, from industrial to neighborhood, general commercial, if those don't sound all that familiar to you, it's because this is from the Smith Grove Flume and which has slightly different category names. But if you can see my hand where it's moving here, the future land use map amendment concerns this portion of the property here along Laurel Street. And then this portion of the property here, which fronts Kentucky Street. So those are, those are the portions that, that the future land use map amendment concerns. And then. Going to the next one, you see here, various labels for, for the zoning. And so, so where the future land use map amendment was down here, this is proposed be from RS one A to general business. And then this portion here proposed to go from RS one A to LI. And then this back here is actually zoned heavy industrial, proposed to go to light industrial. And then this portion over here, which also had a future land use map amendment, proposed to go from RS one A to general business. And I'm going to go ahead one more, and then we'll get back to the rest of it. You may notice that the concept looks like it's got a little bit more on it than those, those last two exhibits do, and there's a reason for that because part of this development is, is actually a portion of an existing business in Smith Grove. And so what you saw on the previous two slides, they end right about here roughly. And so what this concept shows is the existing business here, and then how it is proposed to be added to. So that, so that's why that looks a little bit different. Just wanted to clarify that as we get started here. So I'll go back to our other slides, and we can start the staff report. One too far, okay. Also, we'll note one reason for this, for this application, as you see there on the first page of your staff report. In this portion here, it's currently RS one A, but as you can see, the, the applicants have already been operating the business on this property. So this portion for, one reason for this application is to bring the property into compliance with how it is already operating. With, with the other parts, the proposed to be rezoned a general business, these two sections, sections here, the intent is to develop those properties with a mixture of multifamily residential and commercial uses. So. We'll go on to the use map. So you see, there's kind of a mixture in the area, a lot of single family residential, some industrials, some vacant, commercial, agriculture. And so we've got kind of the, kind of the gamut here. And then I'll, I'll go ahead and go back to the concept so we can leave that up and look at it if we need to. But the pre-application conference was on November 10th of last year. The applicants with this application proposing to go from single family residential and industrial to the uses of industrial, commercial, and multifamily residential. The proposed density would be 23.01 dwelling units per acre. Development history, the industrial and residential are the original zoning classifications for the properties. In 1997, Smith Grove adopted a new zoning map establishing the zoning for these properties as I two, heavy industrial, and R one, single family residential. These properties were converted from I two and R one to HI and RS one A through amendment to the zoning ordinance 2001. So the properties are designated as light industrial on the Smith Grove Flume. The applicants have requested to amend the flume from light industrial to neighborhood general commercial for a portion of the development, which we just looked at. And so this body should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Staff has noted that there are adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development, with an exception noted regarding road width, which we'll look at in just a second. There are several mature trees located in the central portion of the property at Zero Kentucky Street. There are known sinkholes in the vicinity, and the existing home at 332 Laurel Street was built in 1896. So we will go on to page two, the staff report, where you have there the procedures for amending the future land use map. There is not a description of the light industrial or the neighborhood general commercial category, since they are from the Smith Grove Flume. The applicants included the following information with their application to address those criteria for amending the flume. They said compatibility with the surrounding development is addressed with the proposed development plan conditions submitted with the zone change application. So moving on, I just mentioned road width a second ago. Kentucky Street is 14 foot wide roadway. Staff's also noted that the properties contain soil types that are designated as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. I just mentioned 332 Laurel Street, built in 1896. However, it's not a locally designated historic property, nor is it listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review, starting on page three there. Surrounding density, the majority of the residential properties in the area are low density residential. The proposed density for the general business portion of the development is 23.01 dwelling units per acre. Surrounding architectural features, residential structures in the area are one story in height. There are also taller commercial structures present in the vicinity. Building materials review, the majority of the residential structures in the vicinity have a vinyl exterior. There's also a brick home nearby. Commercial and industrial structures have exteriors comprised mainly of metal block foundations. Building orientation, the main building within the development has a front facade oriented toward Laurel Street. Staff suggests that all residential structures be oriented toward Laurel Street or Kentucky Street. The applicants did not address building orientation as part of their application. The multifamily destruct, structures depicted on the preliminary development plan, talking about over here, have side, side besides facing Kentucky Street. And pedestrian and bicycle transit facilities that are sidewalks on both sides of Laurel Street. So there is an area specific policy review with this one, since it is within the boundary of Smith Grove Rural Village Policy Plan. And so staff has included some items down here for your consideration. SG one, to ensure orderly development of vacant tracts and infill sites within the city of Smith Grove, the flume should guide all zoning and development decisions. So this one is left up to your determination if you so choose to amend the future land use map. SG two, infill residential development should reflect the character of the neighborhood with regard to size, scale, setbacks, and architecture. The residential structure shown on the preliminary development plan and the number of units per buildings proposed in the DPCs are not a reflection of the character of the existing neighborhood, including size, scale, and architecture. The application does not comply with this policy. SG three, new single family residential development of greater than 10 units should be limited in density to no more than four units per acre. There are 32 units shown on the preliminary development plan. The DPCs propose a maximum of 40 units. Forty units on 1.7381 acres results in density of 23.01 dwelling units per acre and does not comply with this policy. SG five, new multifamily residential development shall be limited to two family and townhouses only. The proposed DPCs allow up to eight units per building. There are no townhouses proposed. The application does not comply with this policy. SG eight, commercial development in areas outside of the highway commercial district should be limited to neighborhood size, scale, and type. The commercial structures shown on the preliminary, preliminary development plan appear to be residential in scale, as far as the footprints go, give or take 4,000 square feet or less. The proposed DPCs for the general business portion of development, however, allow up to 28,000 square feet of commercial buildings and do not match what is shown on the preliminary development plan. The zoning ordinance permits buildings up to 10,000 square feet in size in the proposed general business zone. The applicants have not addressed a maximum building size in their development plan conditions. The proposal, therefore, does not comply with this policy. And SG nine, only light industrial development and uses should be allowed and should be limited to the areas designated on the Smith Grove future land use map. The light industrial portion of this proposal complies with SG nine, but the general business portion of the proposal does not. And so this one is up to, up to your own determination. So in, in summary, there were six items called out here, two of which were left up to your determination, and four of which do not comply. So we'll go on to the development plan conditions. Now, the first eight I'm going to read here, this is for the general business portion. The first eight are the same in both, so I'm not going to read them again for the light industrial portion, but just know that these eight are the same for the light industrial section. Number one, any existing sinkholes on the property shall be undisturbed to the greatest extent possible. If disturbed, the sinkhole will be repaired prior to any construction above said sinkhole. Any, number two, any existing mature trees on the property shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Number three, access points shall be reviewed and approved by the Warren County Road Department and also in coordination with the city of Smith Grove. Number four, commercial buildings shall be constructed of wood, metal, vinyl siding, brickstone, concrete based siding, or other modern masonry materials with no exposed smooth faced plain block above grade. The second sentence, as you can tell, is not in the light industrial section, but it is here. Multifamily buildings shall be constructed of wood, vinyl siding, brickstone, concrete based siding, or other modern racing materials with no exposed smooth faced plain block above grade. Number five, the following uses shall not be permitted on the property. Commercial parking, active outdoor recreation, entertainment, sportsman's farm and firearm range, manufacturing, mobile home sales, light aviation, mining, telecommunications tower, truck stop, and towing operations. Number six, all new utility lines on the property shall be underground as permitted by utility companies. Number seven, only one freestanding sign per developed lot excluding directional signs shall be placed on the property. Any freestanding sign shall be a maximum of 100 square feet and a maximum of 20 feet tall. Number eight, lighting on the property shall be directed away from and shall be shielded to prevent light trespass or reflection onto any adjoining residential properties. So those are the ones that are the same. These next three are only for the general business portion. Number nine, if the existing residential structure at 332 Laurel Street is demolished or removed, a reasonable effort shall be made to donate any salvageable materials to the Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar organization prior to demolition. Number 10, development shall be allowed up to 28,000 square feet, commercial buildings, and up to 40 multifamily units. Number 11, multifamily buildings will be limited to two stories with a maximum of eight units. So we'll go down to the Focus 2030 category review. There were 20 items that staff evaluated, four of which comply, 12 of which were left up to your determination, may comply or generally comply, and four of which generally do not comply. So the ones that may comply, LU 111 and 112, dealing with the flume application, and LU 113, dealing with compatibility, left up to your own determination. LU two, if the proposal is a high quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. LU two one four, PR 17, NCR 116, the proposal generally complies with this, as the applicants agreed in both sets of development plan conditions that any existing mature trees on the property shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Two five two, if the proposed development is a compatible infill project, and if the proposal complies with that. The proposal generally does not comply with LU two eight and LU two eight one, that's in reference to those policies from the Smith Grove Rural Village Policy Plan that we just went over, two of which were left up to your determination, and four of which did not comply. LU two nine, if the proposed development will protect the character of Smith Grove if it is compatible in design and placement with existing structures and contributes to the historic character of the community. The proposal generally does not comply with NCR two five or NCR two five three, since the applicants have not agreed to preserve the historic home, but did make the condition about donating salvageable materials. HN one, HN one three, if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern development within the area, and if it will strengthen existing neighborhoods and districts. And proposal generally complies with EV one. If this application is approved, it will help to retain an existing business. The proposed commercial area may also provide opportunity for new businesses and could help to diversify the local economy. So we will go back to page one, where we got some points to consider. Number one, this body should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets the criteria outlined in LU 114. Number two, if the flume amendment is approved, the general business portion of the proposal would be consistent with the flume and the neighborhood general commercial category. The LI portion of the proposal is consistent with the flume and the light industrial category. Number three, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and some of the review criteria for site design. And number four, the planning commission should consider if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. So that is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicants are with us.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we hear from the applicant? No questions? The applicants present, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Is the current business, is there now out of zoning compliance? Is that what we're doing there?
Commissioner Clark, the, the, the portion that, and maybe I'll go back to the aerial that might, that might help a little bit. that might help a little bit. So, there is the existing business that, um, that's over here, uh, which is, is, uh, as far as the zoning, uh, the, the use is allowed there. But it has spilled over into this section here, which is currently still zoned RS one A. And that is, uh, uh, with a small portion, I guess, zoned, uh, heavy industrial, but, uh, the vast majority is zoned RS one A. So, um, that is not permitted, um, and so part of the purpose of this application would be to, um, to clean up that zoning where this could continue.
Okay.
And the applicant, is there anything that you would like to add or clarify?
Um, well.
If you, if you state your name for, sir.
John Balance.
And your address?
Thirteen one oh one Louisville Road.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Um, we've, uh, owned and occupied this location since two thousand thirteen. We bought it in four different transactions, um, kind of. Gentlemen owned it, kind of, fell on bad times and they all got repossessed by different banks, but, um, we kind of moved in, uh, the whole back property was overrun. We had to get skid steers and dozers in there. Uh, they were getting zoning violations. Um, we kind of cleaned the, tried to clean the property up and, um, really didn't even know that we were, uh, violating anything. And, um, earlier last year, we did an addition and we had to change some white lines and when we did, um, we kind of made aware that, you know, that when we did that, we were made aware and I guess funding commission was, you know, made aware and, and so we, uh, need to clean this up. And if we're gonna do this, the thought is you might as well just do it once. Um, and, um, so we just kind of wanted to get the, what, you know, the future land use map is light industry. This is, um, the whole corner is light industry. And we thought a good progression, light industry, general business, the multifamily made sense, so.
Thank you, sir. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or Mr. Balance?
Mr. Balance, do you have any proposed, uh, anything coming in there or are you just cleaning it all up right now?
Yeah, uh, I, I know immediate plans, uh, we, uh, this aerial, um, since we got the, we've done a lot, that whole back parking lot that the golf carts on, that is all gravel now. We put down, I don't know, about twenty thousand, uh, dollars worth of gravel and, and, uh, and, uh, site work to make that look better. So that's, uh, it did look bad when, in the winter when it was, you know, wet and then we get, you know, so it looks a lot cleaner back there now, um. Um, but I'm, I've been in talks with, uh, the two, the actual three tracks, every track but this corner. Um, and purchasing it, so if, if I did that, it would kind of change the way we would move forward, um, which would, you know, kind of negate the narrowness of Kentucky. The reason we proposed the, the higher unit count then makes sense because we didn't know which direction we would go. The, the general business, uh, you know, businesses or the multifamily. So if you did the little lot and the other lot, multifamily, then that's forty total, thirty-two and eight. Um, we just don't know which direction, but thought general business gave us the most flexibility moving forward.
Well, sure does look a zig and times better. Thank you for doing that and let's hope we can keep going.
Do, do we have any other questions from commissioners? Do we have anyone in the audience that has a question or maybe in opposition to this request? No one at all? I don't see any opposition or anyone with questions, so I'll call for a motion. We'll need two on this. We'll need the first for the Flume Amendment. And should that be successful, then we'll address the zone change request. So I'll call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one ten. Flume, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, approach Flume Amendment has met the criteria to amend the Flume as outlined in LU one one four in the comprehensive plan. Further requests, motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by our witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Would you second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hunsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Chair runner. Yes, ma'am, the motion carried and now ask for a motion on the zone request, Saint Joan, excuse me, zone change request.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen dash Z dash dash SG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hunsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair runner. Yes, ma'am, the motion carried, so our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. The next items we have, we've had a request to swap those and here four, here, uh, five, and then go back to item four. So if I have no objection from the commissioners, we'll do that. Docket number twenty twenty-one, twenty-one Z County, GVTP Development LLC and Jim Crockett Fish have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately thirteen point zero one five six acres located at zero Elrod Road bounded by Stagner Lane and Emberton Road from agriculture to RS one D, which is single-family residential with a general development plan. And we're ready for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on February tenth uh, and that was for the property outlined in yellow on the screen. And the applicants are proposing to rezone from ag to single-family RS one D to create a maximum of forty single-family residential lots. The current land use, if we flip to the land use map, you'll see is agriculture with a future land use designation of low-density residential. And that particular category, uh, comprises areas designated for single-family detached development and attached single-family development, including twin homes, where each unit is plotted on its own individual lot with gross densities ranging from zero to four and a half dwelling units per acre. Higher densities may also be possible with a conservation-style development. I'm gonna jump to the preliminary development plan that was submitted. We'll look at the, uh, transportation infrastructure section under the site characteristics review. You'll see here that while the property has frontage on Elrod Road, um, that no access is proposed to Elrod Road and so the proposed lots on the screen this evening would actually tie in with the existing Stagner Farm subdivision and then access Elrod Road through the main entrance there. Moving down to site design and compatibility review, uh, we've noted that densities of existing subdivisions in the area range between zero point six six dwelling units per acre and three point seven four dwelling units per acre. And the density proposed for this development is three point zero seven dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, the majority of the surrounding area is comprised of one- and two-story, single-family homes. The adjacent Stagner Farm subdivision requires fourteen hundred square feet, uh, for a minimum home size and a two-car garage. Those same requirements are proposed as part of this application. And similar, uh, under the building materials review, we've also listed the building materials, uh, that are in place for the existing Stagner Farms subdivision, uh, requiring that the exterior of all residences and other structures consist of brick, stone, drive-it-seamant siding, man-made stone, vinyl, hardy, or other modern masonry materials, or LP smart siding. Brickstone, man-made stone, uh, shall extend to grade for residences constructed within the development and no less than forty percent of the residences shall have seventy percent exterior consisting of brickstone, drive-it-seamant siding, man-made stone, hardy, or other modern masonry materials, or LP smart siding. And again, uh, these proposed requirement, or proposed materials, um, are also the same requirements for this application. Under landscaping and screening, staff suggested that new homes with side or rear-facing facades be screened and the applicants did agree to a screening requirement in development plan condition twelve. Proposed open space, uh, the proposed development will actually, uh, under the proposed development plan conditions would have access to the amenities in the PUD portion of the Stagner Farm subdivision, which would include a, a clubhouse and pool area. Moving down to the development plan conditions, uh, number one requires underground utilities and uniform streetlights. Two, sets a minimum home size, which we just talked about earlier. Um, three, outdoor parking of trailers, campers, boats, and RVs will be prohibited. Four, addresses building materials. Five, maximum of forty lots with a minimum two-car garage and a minimum eighteen-foot width requirement for driveways. Six, driveways shall be constructed of concrete. Seven, requires participation in an HOA and allows the residences, uh, residents to access the community center and pool in the existing Stagner Farm subdivision. Eight, addresses maintenance of common open space. Nine, trash and recycling receptacles shall be kept hidden from street view with the exception of collection days. Ten, uh, states that development plan conditions two, three, four, six, seven, and nine will be con- converted to private restrictions. Eleven prohibits direct access to Elrod Road. Twelve, uh, mentions those screening requirements for side or rear-facing facades along Elrod Road. Thirteen addresses tree preservation. Fourteen includes considerations for sinkholes. Under the focus twenty thirty category review, staff evaluated eighteen items. We found eight of those items to be in compliance and zero were out of compliance. And ten of the items, the planning commission should evaluate for compliance and those include LU one point one point one and LU one point one point two and LU one point one point three, which look at compliance with the future land use map and compatibility. Next, LU two and two point one, which look at quality of development, character protection. Jumping down to LU two five two, uh, that looks at compatibility of infill development. HN one and HN one point three, which look at character, pattern of development, and nearby neighborhoods. And then last, HN two point one and HN four, which address suitability and housing options. Went back to the points to consider on page one. Uh, we have noted that while the proposed RS one D zone is not potentially compatible in the low-density or not identified as potentially compatible in the low-density Flume category, the proposed density for the development is within the low-density residential range that's outlined in the comprehensive plan. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. Second, the proposed development plan, uh, complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And again, compatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt?
So Rachel, just a quick point of clarification, uh, if I, if I'm looking at this correctly, this is essentially an extension, if you will, of Stagner Farms?
Correct.
Would that be accurate? Same developer?
Yes, the only difference is that the current, uh, the current development that's already approved is own PUD planned unit development. Um, and there were some, uh, differences with the front yard setbacks. Um, but in this case, they're just asking for the traditional RS one D zone and would adhere to the, the setbacks as required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay, perfect. And then does this one have a separate HOA or is it a part of the Stagner Farms HOA?
They would participate in the Stagner Farms HOA.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? No comment, no questions? The applicant, is there anything that you would like to add?
Chair Rutter, uh, good evening. This is Chris Davenport on behalf of the applicant. Uh, and, uh, Commissioner Graham's already stolen all my thunder. Uh, the points that I was gonna make is that, uh, this is the same developer. Uh, this is an extension of Stagner Farms. The HOA that they will be a part of, uh, pursuant to that development condition is the Stagner Farms. So, uh, although the, the zoning here is RS one D as opposed to PUD, uh, that's just because the uniqueness of this extra acreage didn't require us to amend some of those setbacks that we needed to do the putt on in the first part of the development. So, uh, the benefit here, as I see it, is it's an extension of, uh, Stagner. It's got the, all the same design requirements, uh, the, uh, the density is obviously in the low-density, we're at three point oh seven. Um, and, uh, this is really do, I think, a great way of filling this vacant area that exists between the current Stagner zoning and the Baptist church up on the corner. So, I think for all those reasons and the lack of access to Elrod Road, we don't have any more uh, areas of ingress and egress onto Elrod, this, from my perspective, fits perfectly. So, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you.
And my clients are here as well, virtually.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any question for, uh, Mr. Davenport? No questions? Do we have anyone here, uh, in the audience listening or have, uh, opposition that would like to make a statement or ask a question? I think we have a, I think it says Amy Gifford. I'm sorry. You're, you're muted if you would, uh, take care of that.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, you're muted, yes. There you go. Uh, if you state your name and address, please.
Uh, I'm David Gifford. Um, I live at, uh, two thirteen Gold Rush Drive. Um, I'm actually the pastor, go ahead.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'm, I'm actually the pastor of the church that, uh, joins the property and, and there was just a word or some terminology I didn't understand as the, uh, lady was making the presentation. What, what is screening?
I can help answer that and I'll actually, um, let me pull up the condition because I just kind of summarized what it says. Um, but the condition in the staff report states that, let me get to that section here. Where did it go? Here it is. That's number twelve. Um, it says that each lot adjoining Elrod Road shall have a sufficient landscape buffer to screen any rear or side facades of homes on such lots. So essentially, the easiest way to explain that is if, if you're looking at the back of a house or the side of a house, they're going to install a landscape buffer to help minimize the visual impact along Elrod Road.
So it, it doesn't reference the property line between the subdivision and the church's property all the way down through there then?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, all right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions from anyone in the audience?
I have a question if, if no one else does.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I see there's a little house that's completely surrounded now. Have you all gonna put up a fence or something to protect them? I mean, we put one subdivision on one side of them and now we've come around to the other side and it completely surrounds them. Is there gonna be a fence? What kind of protection are you giving that little house?
Uh, Commissioner Clark, this is Chris Davenport. We have not heard, at least- Commissioner Clark, this is Chris Davenport. We have not heard, at least from my knowledge, we haven't heard anything from that owner about requesting that. You know, I know in the first hearing you had tonight and from other cases, you know, some buffering is required for incompatible uses typically a commercial use against a single-family use. This is technically single-family adjoining, single-family. So we haven't been asked to do that and I know the staff doesn't typically ask us to do that between, you know, particularly in this case, the two same uses. So that, you know, that has not been discussed.
So they haven't talked to that landowner as far as you know?
Well, according to my client, that land is currently listed for sale as well.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that sign. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment?
I don't know what to do.
Helsley, I can read the last.
Hello?
Yes, yes.
This is Elizabeth Helsley?
Yes, ma'am. If you'd state your name and address for us, please.
Okay, Elizabeth Helsley, 2959 Elrod Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do swear to tell the truth.
Yes, you can go ahead and ask your question or make a statement. Yes, ma'am.
We are located there and that property that is surrounded by the subdivisions, as Commissioner Clark was pointing out. I am wondering if there will be some kind of buffering of plantings of evergreen trees or something like that along the side of our property. We were told by Stagner Farms that there would be buffering on the other side of our property.
And I would take Ms. Helsley's referring to a development condition and Rachel, I don't know if you have those handy. If there is a DPC or back in those days, it was probably called a bonding element that dealt with that. It would be something that we would probably, I'm sure, mirror if that's what the property owner is asking for.
I'm checking on that right now. Give me one second.
Ms. Helsley, am I correct that that property is listed for sale? Was I correct when I said that?
That is incorrect.
Incorrect. Okay.
Our property.
Our property is not for sale.
Mister, and then my client says he, it's the other house. So I will extend my apologies on his behalf.
Oh, yes, the others.
Let me know when you found those, Rachel.
Yeah, I'm on number 13. I'm skimming through. Give me one second.
I think you start video.
Where?
I'm not seeing a condition on a landscaping or buffering requirement. Let me read through them one more time.
Can we ask them if they put the, on the other side of their, have they got the landscaping up on the other side where Stagner Farms is now?
They have not at this time.
And I don't think that's developed quite yet, Ms. Clark. So that's.
I just saw a lot of dirt out there and I just know that would help them not have so much dirt and dust if there was some kind of protection.
That has been a problem.
While they're looking that up, Ms. Helsley, this is Commissioner Graham. I want to make sure I understand where your property is located. There are two homes remaining on Elrod Road. One of them, I think, is a vinyl siding home and, or some type of siding home and that is the property that's for sale. Is your home a brick home?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you.
The little, the little hand is on top of our property.
Got it. Understood. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Wait, do we feel like, Rachel, that that wasn't, that that's not?
The only, yeah, the only thing I'm reading regarding screening is number 15 and again, this is for the current Stagner Farms PUD zoned area. Landscape buffer screening of rear side facades on, on homes along Elrod Road. And that the developer shall make all reasonable efforts to maintain mature and healthy trees, not interfering with utility construction or existing within building envelopes. Those are the only two conditions that pertain to landscaping or buffering that I can find.
Ms. Helsley, my clients have informed me that they are agreeable to a 10-foot wide landscape buffer along the property line common with the Helsley property. So I can offer that as a development plan condition.
Okay, thank you.
Will that be a fence or landscaping?
I proposed a landscape buffer is what I proposed.
That would be good. Now, they did not, the, when they developed Stagner Farms, it didn't seem to me that they went out of their way to save any trees. It seemed to me that they took down every tree they possibly could. Now, I don't know if they plan to leave the mature trees that run along the fence line or not. But they knocked down a lot of them developing Stagner. They took down a huge old oak tree in the middle of the field and some beautiful sugar maples. I was really disappointed to see that they didn't try to preserve those, but they were removed.
Just a minute, if I may, Rachel. I'm checking with my clients here.
Hey, Chris, this is Tim Poston.
Yeah. Yeah.
When we talked about preserving, was preserving trees that was next to their property. It was not about preserving trees out in the middle of the field where we were going to develop streets and lots. It was only on coming, if there was any trees beside their property coming in there. And I think that when they got a little confused, somebody's got a little confused about preserving trees. It's very, very difficult, as you know, to preserve trees in the middle of the development to try to design around.
Typically, the, I guess, Tim, I would ask you, would you be agreeable to making reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees not existing in building envelopes, utility placements or roadways?
Absolutely, especially around their house particularly. Between the new lots and these lots, we do intend to clear that fence row because it becomes brush if you're not careful, but, but around, around the lot there that they're talking about, the house they're talking about, absolutely, we will keep those trees.
Would that probably be within the 10-foot landscape buffer anyways?
It would be within the 10-foot and, you know, again, we, we running this a lot. Trees and underbrush are two different things. So trees we would not touch, underbrush we would like to clear.
So you plan to leave the mature trees and clear out the brush?
Yes, ma'am. Make it look clean and nice where the old brush doesn't look all that well, but the trees themselves, you know, a hand, if you see a tree in there that, that you can just put your hand on, we can leave those. We just want to get rid of all the underbrush.
Sure. Understand that.
This, this is Velma Runner. Tim, this is, this is Velma. And I know you're going to tell me that you're going to swear to everything that you just said is the truth, right, sir? I didn't get to swear, you mean?
I, I'm sorry. I jumped right in there and I, I should have waited on you.
That's quite, that's quite all right. It's, it's difficult at a meeting and it's certainly difficult when we're using Zoom. So I just wanted to make sure that, that, that you did swear to the statements that you just made.
I do, I do swear to the statements I just made.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Chris, this is Tim Graham. Just, just as a point of clarification here, if I may. What Mr. Poston was just proposing was in reference to the landscape buffer that, that, the new, I guess, the, the added general development plan condition that you earlier agreed to. He is referring to trees in that new, newly added landscape buffer. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, and, and I was going to do this anyways, Commissioner Graham, that need, we need to make sure that we understand what the developer is obligated to do here and I don't want anyone being misled. And it needs to be such that if this were to pass with these conditions, that staff feels comfortable the way they're written after the fact. So I think what I'm hearing is that the developer will commit to a la, a 10-foot landscape buffer along the property line common with Helsley. And within that buffer will leave the, any mature and healthy trees that currently exist.
Chris, would that be in addition to development plan condition number 13 that already states that the developer shall make all reasonable efforts to maintain mature and healthy trees on the property, not interfering with utility construction or existing within building envelopes?
I did, I had forgotten we'd already offered that. So yes, that would be in addition.
So you're proposing a 10-foot buffer along the, the common property line? And within that buffer, you would maintain existing trees? And I guess if, if it's a landscape buffer, typically we would have some sort of planting requirement within that buffer. Would you just defer to the, the number of plantings outlined in the zoning ordinance?
I would, Rachel. You've, y'all have done a good job of being meticulous with that and I don't think I could do a better job.
Thanks.
And for clarification, you're saying that you, the developer will take down all the trees that are behind our property that are growing in the fence row?
Probably will not take down trees. We want to clean up from lot to lot between two houses. We always try to save trees on a property line like this. So it's the brush that we want to get rid of, to clean it up. It's not that we want to get rid of trees.
Okay.
If there's a fence line, are you going to clean up the fence line and put up a new fence or they just go clean up what's there?
Going to scrape everything out of their fences. If there's a fence, which I, I'm not sure that there is, but if there was a fence, we would get rid of it. We would leave the trees and clean up the underbrush. So from yard to yard, you would be looking at nice trees and not a bunch of grown-up weeds.
Thank you, sir.
Just for the record, anyone who buys a house loves to have a tree in the yard. So we'd love to leave trees if possible.
That is true.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment or a question concerning this application?
Could I just clarify the, the trees that are between the church's property, this and this property that go right down the fence row? Are those going to be protected as well?
Yes, Mr. Get, yeah, Mr. Gifford, that, and I appreciate Rachel reminded me of DPC development, development plan condition 13 that we filed that with the application, saying that the developer would maintain those healthy and mature trees that don't exist within what we call building envelopes. That's where the houses are going to go or the roads or the, you know, the sidewalks or the driveways, those sorts of things. So when they're going to make reasonable efforts to do that, obviously, the place that's least impacted would be your property line, the church's common property line, because that's, you know, that's not even connecting the, the new section to the old section.
I see. Okay.
I wish I had remembered that when you spoke earlier, but I had forgotten that condition.
That's fine. And we've been over several years clearing out, so there's no brush in, in through there anyway. So.
It looks real nice.
Thank you.
I have a question. In the development, Penny Royal across the street from us, there were no trees planted in the new homes and their, in their yards. So it's just devoid of trees in the middle of it. Does the developer plan to plant at least one tree? And if you said that already, I apologize.
I don't see that, Ms. Helsley, as a common condition, frankly. You know, the lots are sold and some people like trees in the yard and some people don't. I think Tim's comment earlier is true that when you have a subdivision, those that are, have natural, mature trees on them are the most desirable. So it's not a condition they're going to plant. It's certainly the homeowners, it's a single-family development. So the homeowners are free, obviously, to plant as they wish.
I have a particular interest in this because I serve on the Bowling Green Tree Board and Bowling Green is a Tree City USA. So we certainly want to encourage that people would plant some kind of tree in their yard. Doesn't have to be one that will grow really big because these yards aren't going to be really big. But that would certainly be something we want to encourage.
I believe that, I believe that the builder that you'll see building in Stagner Farms, which will be the same builder over here on this new section, you will see that they do plant trees. We leave that up to the builder. In this particular case, you're not going to have multiple builders. You've got one builder who's doing all of this project. And they do, if you'll look at their subdivisions that are there now, they do plant trees.
So this will be Jago.
That's not something that, that we demand them to do, but they do that on their own.
Yes.
So this will be Jago?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I, yes, I've already been in contact with them and they have told me that they do plant one tree in each yard.
Do we have anyone else with a question or comment concerning this application? Any opposition to the request? No questions, no opposition. I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon show development plan document number 202121Z County. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective action presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
I'm giving you a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Ballas?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
I'm really concerned about the neighbors, but I'm going to vote yes, but hope that this developer will take care of that little neighbor there and be good neighbors to them.
Yes, ma'am. Motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval and I thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good night, everyone.
You do the same. Thank you. Last item on tonight's agenda, 202120Z County, Jay Allen Builders have filed an application to present tract of land containing approximately 14, I don't know if I want to say this, 6662 acres located at Zero Mount Oliver Road, bounded by Pinner Road and Plum Spring Road from agriculture to RS1C, single-family residential with a general development plan. And we'll have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on January the 27th for the property outlined in yellow. And the applicants are proposing to rezone this property from Ag to RS1C, single-family residential, to develop the property with a maximum of 51 single-family residential lots. You can see that the current land use, when we get to the land use map, is agriculture. The future land use designation for the property is moderate density residential. And this particular future land use category consists of areas developed for higher density, single-family detached and attached, including RS1C and RS1D, as well as semi-detached multifamily developments such as duplexes. as well as semi-detached multifamily developments such as duplexes, townhomes, apartments, condominiums, and mobile home parks. densities in this category should range between three and a half and thirteen dwelling units per acre. Jump to the proposed site layout here. And you'll see with this particular application, similar to the last one, this is somewhat of an extension of an existing subdivision. In this case, we're, we're looking at the North Ridge subdivision. And also, under the transportation infrastructure section, you'll see that this section of the development would be accessed through North Ridge and would not have direct access onto Mount Oliver Road. Just will note, under the Site Design and Compatibility Review Section, that the proposed density is three point four eight dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, the existing residences that are adjacent to the proposed development are mostly one-story. There are a couple of taller agricultural buildings also located nearby. The current binding elements for North Ridge require a minimum home size of eleven hundred square feet. The minimum home size for another recent zone change adjacent to North Ridge off of Mormon Lane is twelve hundred square feet. Under materials, building materials review, we've noted that the majority of existing residences adjacent to development are vinyl with split face block foundations and that other homes in the area are a mixture of metal, wood, and brick. Building orientation, staff suggests that new homes be oriented to face the new internal streets and that any home with a side or rear-facing facade be screened. Going down to the development plan conditions, number one, maximum fifty-one lots. Two, looks at a minimum home size and sets that at twelve hundred square feet. Three, each residence will have a minimum one-car garage with an eighteen-foot wide driveway. Four, maximum building height, two stories. Five, outlines permitted building materials for all structures, plain face block is prohibited. Six, underground utility requirements. Seven, requires uniform streetlights. Eight, requires a community mailbox system. Nine, tree preservation, trees on the perimeter with a caliper of eight inches or greater and which are located within ten feet of the property line will be maintained. Ten prohibits access to Mount Oliver Road. Eleven includes considerations for sinkholes. And twelve requires that a ten-foot landscape buffer be provided along the side of any residence that doesn't have a front facade facing Mount Oliver Road. And thirteen converts development plan conditions two, three, four, and five to flat restrictions upon recordation of a flat. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated eighteen items and found nine of those items to be in compliance. One was out of compliance and eight are up to the planning commission to evaluate for compliance. So the first, LU one point one point three, which looks at compatibility. The next, for your consideration, LU two and two point one, which look at quality of development and character protection. LU two point one point one is the one item that's noted as out of compliance, and that looks at open space standards. The applicants did not address open space and the proposal does not comply with this item. Jumping down to LU two five two for your consideration, which looks at compatibility of infill development. Next, HN one and HN one point three, which address character pattern of development in nearby neighborhoods. And last, HN two point one and HN four, which look at suitability and housing options. Jumping back to page one, wrap up with our points to consider. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map. The proposed development does comply with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And again, compatibility of the proposal should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any questions from Ms. Hurt?
So have they not proposed sidewalks or anything for green space?
Commissioner Clark and Ben may be able to verify this. I think this question came up the other day. But the, the existing sections in North Ridge do not have sidewalks. And so I don't believe that they would continue in this section, because this would be the only section that has sidewalks.
That is generally, generally correct. We don't, the county does not wish to start introducing sidewalks in areas that don't have a connected sidewalk network. We have been speaking with the developer and I won't speak too much for Mr. Allen, but we have had some discussions about putting figuring out how to maybe put a greenway through the area. He's, he's been fairly supportive of that, but there's nothing we can commit to at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the staff report for Rachel before we hear from the applicant? No other questions? Then we'll hear from the applicant, please. Is Mr. Allen with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, but, sorry about that. But, yes, ma'am, I, I would be glad to answer any questions that anyone has. Rachel did an excellent job going through those conditions. And again, they, they match or identical to, to the existing North Ridge subdivision, and this is in essence, an extension of that. So if anyone has any questions, again, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions from Mr. Allen?
So Mr. Allen, are you thinking about putting a greenway system through there for people to, to walk their animals and to walk, you know, with your baby stroller and things? So these are going to be small, beginning family-type houses. Would you consider doing something like that to, to make it a little easier on these new little families?
Well, this, this particular section does not, again, does not tie to five twenty-six and, and only enters into the existing North Ridge subdivision. Uh, that doesn't have any sidewalks in it at all. Now, it, it does have over fifty acres of green space in it currently. And so I think the, the conversation that Ben and I have had over the years is, you know, on the east side of what will be a continuing extension of North Ridge. We had tried to take a look at how to get some connections from, from North Ridge over to E from White, either down five twenty-six or some other way. There are a couple pieces of property between me and the park.
Right.
But the, the, that's kind of the direction we were, we were contemplating on how to get people from there to the park. Uh, but that's just going to have to take place in some future developments. This is on the, in essence, the west side. This is the farthest west side point of North Ridge, so there, there's, there's nowhere for the, if we had green space there, there's, there's nowhere for it to go. That green space would, or the greenway would be on the far east side. If that might, if, if that, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. I was thinking about a little park or something, a little play area or something with one of the lots.
Well, they've got a, a pair, uh, again, behind, one street, one street over in any direction, there are, there are five, ten-plus acre open spaces. Uh, now, some of that is, some of that is retention, but it's all mode uh, and, and usable or accessible by foot. Uh, but my experience has been out there on, on a daily basis is that uh, other than North Ridge Drive, which is a connection between five twenty-six and Mormon Lane, the bulk of the development is really residential-only traffic. And so people do walk, put strollers, uh, walk their dog in that part of the neighborhood, because there's just, there's no cut-through traffic or anywhere for anybody to go.
Mr. Allen, this is Velma, and you are going to swear that everything you said, that that was the truth, right? I didn't get a chance to swear you in, sir. We need to swear you in, sir. Mr. Allen?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The, the conversation started and I had no place to jump in and interrupt you. I just want to make sure that everything you said, you swore to tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize. I did start too fast. I'm sorry.
No, sir, that was my, my fault, my fault. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Allen now that he has sworn in? Do we have anyone in audience that has a question or is in opposition to this request? Do we have anyone online in opposition? No questions, no opposition? No, nothing then? Anything else from the commissioners? Then I'll ask for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon the general development plan, Document Number twenty, twenty-one, twenty Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, our requests at this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, Commissioner Unsale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Valas?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval and thank you all.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you and good evening. Now we're down to anything for discussion, Mr. Peterson?
Well, such a short meeting tonight, I was thinking maybe I should talk for a couple hours, but I, I will not. I think, Jessica, can you remind us when that training date is? And we have, I think, until next Tuesday to sign up. If you're interested, we'll send another email out.
Yes, sir. That training with the Brad is on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, from noon to four PM, and it counts as four training hours.
So we'll send out another email on that, just to, just to follow up. I think a couple of you may have signed up, but just wanted to follow up with that. Other than that, I, I'm good for tonight.
Can you let us know who needs hours?
And I believe it's getting close to everyone on, on the commissioner, commission will need at least four more hours.
Look, we can send that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else? I want to thank you all for your help tonight and meetings adjourned. Thank you.